Good afternoon, everyone. Good afternoon. Good afternoon. We'd like to welcome you to the study session of the Mesa City Council for December the 9th. All of our council is present. The first item on our agenda for this meeting is to review the agenda for tonight's council meeting. So council, please refer to that agenda. I know right off the bat, there are a couple of things we can say. Item 5G is going to be taken off the consent, or taken off the agenda altogether. It's not quite ready to move forward on. So 5G will be eliminated. Council, any other questions regarding items that are currently on the consent agenda? We do have item, yes, I'm sorry, Jeremy.
I'd like to request item 4N be taken off consent.
4M?
N, Nancy.
N, okay. 4N is off the consent. Council, other questions regarding anything on the agenda for tonight? I know currently we have off of the consent agenda, item 8A, the vaping ordinance. Okay, thank you. Natalie and John, thank you. Can you give us a preview of what we're going to be looking at tonight on the vaping ordinance?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. My name is Natalie Lewis. I'm with the city manager's office, and I'm joined here today by our building official, John Sheffer. And I've been asked just to very quickly provide an update based on what we've learned since last Thursday when we started this conversation, but also just to remind the public what it is that we're doing and not doing. So, we met last Thursday with Arizona Smoke Free Business Alliance. They provided you a couple of articles that were related to workplace safety policies. I then provided you some additional articles from a mix of reputable resources, like the Surgeon General, and the World Health Organization, CDC, FDA, and others. And so, I wanted to make sure council received that. It's available to the public online as well. And following my comments and John's comments today, we have three members of the Maricopa County Health Department that's here. We have Marcy Flanagan, who's the Director of Public Health. We have Dr. Rebecca Sunenschein, who is the Medical Director for Maricopa County's Department of Health. And we have Lori Thomas, who is the county's Healthy Aging Coordinator. So all three of them are available to talk to you and answer any questions that you might have before you go upstairs this evening. So tonight, based on community concerns, particularly for us as it's related to elevated use by youth and unwelcome secondhand exposures to vaping, we are recommending that the city council update the smoke-free ordinance and treat vaping like smoking and cigarettes. The goal, as Mr. Brady said on Thursday, was to keep this simple, not only because it's easy from a process standpoint, but also for public and stakeholder understanding and enforcement purposes. We also wanted to balance the community desire to limit those unwelcome secondhand exposures while minimizing impacts on an individual's rights to use and purchase these products and the businesses that serve them. So what we are not going to be doing tonight is making any changes that take away an adult's personal choice to use or purchase these project, or these products. And they can use these products anywhere smoking is allowed today. So, for example, in their own personal residences, of course, in private clubs, and in other locations that are already available. We are also not changing the existing smoking and vaping shops' ability to allow customers to sample products in their vaping and their smoke shops, as long as they have separate ventilation and HVAC. And John's going to talk a little bit more about the 11 locations that are here in Mesa and what we have discovered. So what we are doing is just bringing this current code to you. We want to update it with existing market conditions related to vaping. We want to treat vaping the same as smoking and cigarettes in public facilities, public gathering spaces, and in certain places of employment, which includes restaurants and bars, unless some of those bars can have separate ventilated areas where they can allow for smoking and now vaping. And if the council approves this updated ordinance, it would not go into full effect for six months, or June 9th, 2020. This will allow us a lot of time to work with the public and the stakeholders out there to make sure that they understand the changes to the ordinance, how it impacts them, change habits that are happening, work with the Chamber of Commerce with all of the businesses, and also the Police Department on being ready to enforce the new code. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to John Sheffer, our building official, and he could talk more about the specific vaping businesses that are represented by the organization that visited us on Thursday.
So, Mayor, council members, as Natalie mentioned, there was some concern about vape shops having to have a separate ventilation system installed in existing occupancies, which could lead to a costly upgrade. However, it's unlikely that these shops will need to actually have a new system installed. Reason is, almost all of these, every, all 11 of them that we've looked at are in strip malls, and it's common for a strip mall to be designed with each tenant space having its own independent HVAC system. They typically have their own electrical service for each tenant, so they can have a separate electrical fee, you know, the utility fees, that's common practice. So, in every case that we looked at, there's, the building was already set up with an independent system on a per-suite basis. So the air system's not sharing or communicating with the adjacent suites already. So, none of the locations we looked at would have to upgrade for that reason.
I think that's it.
Sorry.
John, also, talk a little bit about the threshold where you think that, there's the idea that if they're just, is there any threshold about the usage where that creates a different category of ventilation that you would be concerned about?
Yes. The mechanical code, aside from this ordinance, which has been in effect for years and hasn't changed, and it's been applied this way for some time now. If you have a smoking bar or a smoking lounge, then the amount of ventilation that you need to have is increased to compensate and keep the air clean. Same with a restaurant, or bathrooms have different ventilation requirements. Just anytime you have any contaminants in the air, the requirement's to have a little bit more airflow to keep the air clean and breathable, and that's common, it has been common practice for years. In the case of a vape shop, if you have a smoking lounge, then there's potential, depending on what existing system is there, you might need additional airflow, which could mean you would install some additional ventilation, or basically some ceiling fans, basically exhaust and bring fresh air in, but you wouldn't have to put in an entirely new separate system. So the cost of that would be relatively low compared to an actual new full ventilation system, HVAC system. So, it is possible, and depending on the amount of smoke and the number of smokers, there's a couple of directions you can go in the code for that. You can simply go with the code that says if you have a smoking arrangement, you can have this amount of air changes, kind of per hour, per person. Or, you could do a design specific. So if you had an analysis that said, well, this is how much smoke we're off-gassing, so this size system is adequate. And there's a good chance a lot of existing systems are adequate. We've seen that in the past.
So, Mayor, council, I think the other thing I, we wanted to be clear, because when we met with the industry after the study session, we asked them to give us a list of the vaping
Businesses.
Businesses in the city. And so, since then, John's been looking at each one of those, because we were concerned about, there was concern there was going to be a significant cost to upgrade or to comply. And based on our, you know, we haven't, we've been able to look at the systems on the roof and the, and the systems on the, on the ground. And I think both, that didn't, it didn't concern us. It appears that they all have separate systems. And then, John, can you give us an example of other, other industries where we see kind of the same concerns that you deal with on a regular basis?
Industries, any industry that has odors or something that is off-gassed, if, a restaurant's a good example. You've got specific ventilation requirements for a restaurant. You don't want the kitchen air, or any of the, the smoke from cooking even, to come out into the dining area. So there's a specific requirement to keep that air flowing toward the kitchen and not away. Bathrooms have a recirculation requirement where you don't want to mix that air with the other parts of the building. So, the design of HVAC systems to separate certain areas is quite common for those reasons. And in the particular case of the vape shop, they would have an independent HVAC system for their suite, and that wouldn't be able to communicate with the adjacent suites, because you don't want to share those odors with, with your neighbor. But, the way that strip malls are designed, to have independent systems already, the requirement to add a system is not there.
So anyway, we just wanted to kind of, and we've, we've shared that information with the, with the representatives that are here, so they understand that we don't believe that any of those that they identified would have a conflict with this ordinance as it's written today.
Okay, thank you. Frankie.
Yep. Question, do we, is there like a permit or something that when they submit, if they want to be a vape shop, they have to get certain requirements for ventilation? Or is that part of the entry to set up something?
It's, it would be part of the construction permit. So any upgrades to the building would be part of the permit. If they put in, you know, new counters or, you know, remodel, usually it's, it's part of a tenant improvement where they remodel a suite, and that would be part of that package.
But is, is there something, if, if a business wants to be a vape shop, that they, there's a specific permit that they have to have, or a specific item that they have to have?
There's no specific licensing for them, if that...
It's just that when you would review that proposed improvement, you would now look under this code for guidance, is that how you do it? John, how would you do it?
So if, if you remodel a suite, the drawings would come in and show kind of all the adjustments or modifications you're making to the building, and that potentially is one of them. If you were going to increase the ventilation of the system, you would show that on the plans. But we have an all-inclusive construction permit. It's a one-stop shop, basically. So there's nothing separate that you would have to do aside from that regular permit.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Freeman.
John or Natalie, good afternoon. Are we, how is our neighbors, our other cities and municipalities, are we in compliance with their ordinances? Do we, are we way out of the box? And then, if you were a smoke shop anyway, you were provide, you would probably be providing some type of ventilation requirement, negative pressure type for the area that you're allowed to smoke in? So I guess, how are we with the other communities within our East Valley area?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Vice Mayor Freeman. We took a look at the other cities, and again, based on the discussion last week and the concern that there may not, we might be out of, you know, alignment with other cities, and that's not accurate. We looked at at least Tempe, and Gilbert, and Goodyear, and
Chandler.
And Chandler, and all of those have the same requirement. So this is not an unusual requirement for this particular use.
Okay. And I know we're, this is important for our consumer base, our citizenry and our community. You know, the schools have their own vaping ordinance as well, or policies, and so, it's just a matter of time for us to come in compliance with this as well. So, yeah, I support this, appreciate it.
Thank you. Mr. Luna.
Natalie, you were kind enough to bring individuals from Maricopa Health Department. Maybe they can come up. I have a question relative to the notion that the vapors are innocuous, and I want them to demystify that.
Thank you, Mayor.
Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council for having us here today. I am just going to very much in brief review some of the literature that's available regarding the question that you just asked, Mr. Luna. Really just covering vaping and its health effects, and then I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have. And Lori, were you able to pass those out? Does everyone have one?
Yes.
Great. So, just briefly, we're going to talk about vaping among youth in the US and Arizona, as well as the health effects of e-cigarettes. Vaping-associated lung injury, which is the issue that everyone's hearing about on the media from CDC. And then, Marcy Flanagan, our director, will go over some of the federal regulations that have been put in place by the FDA. So if you look at this first picture, this is a slide that the US Surgeon General put together, and it depicts US youth e-cigarette use. And what you can see is from 2017 to 2018, the percentage of youth who have smoked or vaped e-cigarettes has gone up dramatically. In fact, among high schoolers, it's gone up 80% from 11.7% to 20.8% nationally in just one year. So that is one of the reasons why there is so much talk about changing policies relating to youth vaping. On this next slide, we provide some Arizona data that, that shares that more than half of all Arizona youth have ever tried vaping. So that's 1 in 2, and that's far more that had ever tried cigarette smoking. And that's from 2015 to 2017, and we have every reason to believe that those numbers are stable or increasing. On this next slide, if you look at 2018 numbers of youth e-cigarette use, you see that 1 in 4 Arizona high school youth vape regularly, or in this case, in the last 30 days. And that's more than 25% higher than national high school averages. So not only are 1 in 4 high schoolers vaping, but we have a much worse problem here in Arizona than throughout the rest of the United States. The reason why all of this is so important is for several reasons. The first of which is nicotine, and as I think most of you are aware, nicotine is highly addictive. It has the immediate effects of increasing blood pressure, heart rate, and your risk of heart disease. E-cigarettes actually can deliver a much higher dose of nicotine than regular cigarettes can, and that's something that has gotten worse over time. So the newer products that are made can deliver much higher doses of nicotine, and they can actually be dialed up to incredibly high doses, which delivers, which can increase the health effects of nicotine substantially more than any regular combustible cigarette. The important piece here is that there's been a lot of scientific evidence and data to support that nicotine exposure during adolescence, which is defined as up to age 25, that's new for some people, can actually harm the developing brain all the way up to age 25. It can cause mood disorders, many of which are chronic throughout the lifetime. It can lead to impairment of attention and learning, which for somebody who's in their primary educational period is key. And it can permanently lower impulse control. So these have lifelong effects on these individuals, and that's one of the reasons why the Surgeon General is really making sure that these data are shared and policies are changed appropriately. So you asked about the chemicals in vape, and now we're getting into what I can only label as gray area. We really don't know all the health effects of what's in vape. And part of that is because there are so many different chemicals in vape. There really are no regulatory standards for what can and cannot be in vape. So, just looking at the flavorance of vape, you're looking at more than 7,000 different chemicals, one of which, one of the ones that has gotten a lot of notoriety is diacetyl, which has been linked to serious irreversible lung disease, or popcorn lung. And that particular one has actually been taken out of other products because it is so severely damaging to the lung. So that's just flavorance. There's also volatile organic compounds that are included in vape, such as benzene, and that one has been well documented to be linked to both anemia and certain types of cancers. I think that was classically associated with dry cleaning and bladder cancer. There's solvents, and those are what you put in with the nicotine or the THC, depending on the type of device. And the ones that have gotten the most study are acryline, formaldehyde, and acetalaldehyde, all of which are known carcinogens. And these tend to be in a lot of different vape devices and in the vape that is exhaled after it's inhaled by the user. Lastly, there are quite a few heavy metals, such as nickel, tin, lead, and cadmium that are included in the vape material, and these, many of these are also known carcinogens. And the important thing is that the specific ingredients included in vape are not regulated by the FDA, so it's difficult, with so many different devices and so many different ingredients and chemicals, it really is difficult to know what you're inhaling and what the person next to you might be exhaling into the air. So that brings us to secondhand vape, which I've abbreviated here, SHV. And there is not a lot of data out there on secondhand vape, and I think it's really relevant to this, because if you're talking about including vape in with tobacco, it's important to know, could there be dilatarius effects from standing next to somebody or breathing the same air as someone who's vaping? And what you can see is that in studies of United States youth, middle and high school youth, were exposed to secondhand vape, more than half of them have been exposed. So our children, and certainly our adults, are routinely exposed to secondhand vape. When you look at all of the literature, including what's been published by the Surgeon General and multiple other scientists, what they can say is that they've measured heavy metals, particulate, ultrafine particulates, including PM 2.5, volatile organic compounds, nicotine, and other carcinogens in the air surrounding the people who are vaping. When they've tried to do studies to look at the immediate effects of breathing in vape, they have not been able to identify immediate effects, because really, these aren't products that cause immediate effects, with one major exception, and that's particulate matter 2.5 is the size of the particulate matter. There's very clear evidence that when you breathe in increased 2.5, that if you have asthma or underlying heart disease, then that condition can be exacerbated. And we do know that people with asthma definitely should not be around anyone who is exhaling any type of particulate matter into the air. So with that, I will say that these carcinogens are measured in the air, and we do know that PM 2.5 is increased, and there are known health effects with that. And that is supported by multiple studies. Lastly, I want to bring up e-cigarette-associated lung injury, which is abbreviated as EVALE in the United States. And as of the 4th of December, there have been 2,291 cases reported now from all 50 states and all of the territories. The median age in the United States is 24, ranging from 13 to 75. The majority are male. Forty-eight deaths from 25 states have been reported, and the median age at death is 49, ranging from 17 to 75. And when you look at a smaller subset that has all the data available, the vast majority of these people have used THC-containing products. About a third of them have exclusively used THC-containing products. So, just, when we take it here locally to Maricopa County, I can tell you that, just actually, I updated the data about an hour before we came here. We are now up to 11 cases in Maricopa County with a median age of 21. It's a bit younger than the rest of the state, or sorry, than the nation. All of these have been hospitalized. Three or 27% have required treatment on a mechanical ventilator. Two cases were then readmitted for complications. No one has died in Maricopa County, although there are deaths under investigation. And 91% of our individuals in Maricopa County did use THC products. Only one has a medical marijuana card, and two products are being currently tested by the FDA. So lastly, I'll update you on what the current thinking is on the cause of EVALE in the US, and what's been shown in the literature is that cases with EVALE are more likely to obtain THC-containing e-cigarettes through informal sources, such as friends, family, or purchasing over the internet, to vape more than five times per day, to use a THC product called Dank Vapes, which turns out to encompass a lot of different types and brands, and to use THC products exclusively. Lastly, CDC identified vitamin E acetate in all of 29 lung fluid samples tested from known EVALE cases, and they called vitamin E acetate a very strong culprit of concern, which basically means they think that it's part of the issue, but they're not willing to rule out the fact that other compounds may be also causing issues. And they believe that the source or sources of injury are likely solvents used in illicit production of THC products. And with that, I'll yield to Marcy.
Good afternoon, Mayor and council members. I'm going to talk a little bit about some national regulation that has occurred nationally. So as of August 8th, 2016, it was illegal to sell e-cigarettes to minors. Prior to that time, mainly because e-cigarettes were not well-known. Any age could go into a store and purchase e-cigarettes. Now, they have to follow whatever local legislation there is surrounding tobacco products for e-cigarettes. So, in the state of Arizona, the current age is 18, except in a few municipalities around the state have actually implemented Tobacco 21 policies. So the minimum age to purchase vaping or tobacco products is 21 in a few areas around Arizona. As of June of 2019, establishments that are creating vape are required to register as an establishment. These are places like Juul, companies like that nationally need to register, submit health documents and the ingredients listing, and include warning statements or labels on their products that they sell. And in 2013, 2014 survey, 81% of all current youth, e-cigarette users cited the availability of flavors being the most appealing reason of why they are using e-cigarettes or vaping. September 2019, many of you may have heard, there was talk at the federal level of banning all flavored e-cigarettes. And Juul, as in October of 2019, stopped selling fruit flavors, and in November, stopped selling mint flavors. In the Arizona legislature, there was bills that were proposed last session, that to include exactly what you are all talking about today, which is including vaping in the Smoke Free Arizona statewide ARS. And that did not pass, mainly because it had a lot of other things tied to it. But there is talk of that same legislation going back to the state legislator this next cycle. Currently, the Smoke Free Arizona, which is Arizona Revised Statute 36, 361, or 36136, is something that our department is in charge of enforcing. And so, we go around when we get complaints and go into places and talk to business owners about making sure they're in compliance with the law, with their signage, having their ashtrays so many feet from the door. And I can just tell you, anecdotally, from the inspections we go, I moved to Maricopa County about six months ago. Prior to that, I was the Health Director in Pima County. And in both places, in Pima and Maricopa County, we consistently hear from business owners that, that are non-vaping business owners, that they wish vaping was included in the Smoke Free Arizona ordinance, because it would make their job a lot easier to tell patrons they can't vape inside. And so, usually, our recommendation is that they have to make their own internal policy or a policy that's just for that movie theater or that mall to not allow vaping within the mall or the movie theater, because the current state statute does not allow for that exemption. So I can tell you that many establishments have asked for similar language to be included.
Thank you, Mr. Luna.
Thank you, thank you very much. I appreciate your presentation. Certainly, this is something very important for our community, especially our kids. So I want to make sure that we do whatever we can to prohibit vaping among our children. So, thank you very much for that information.
Thank you. Council, any questions of these ladies? Thank you very much. Oh, yes.
So, I'm not seeing in the presentation, it shows that on your fourth slide, smoking cigarettes has actually decreased by 7% from 37 to 30%. So, I do have a question. What, I mean, so what are the benefits of vaping in the sense that if people stop smoking cigarettes and switch to vaping? I mean, my understanding is something like half a million people a year die from tobacco smoke, right? So I mean, if they're switching over to vape with just strictly nicotine, and you only have 48 deaths related to vaping, I mean, that seems like a good thing to me, not a bad thing.
So, I think that's, that's a great question. When you look at that particular slide, and it shows that smoking is going down and vaping is going up, those 7% that you're probably losing may or may not have switched over to vaping, but I think the importance is that we were only ever at 37% had ever tried smoking, and we're currently at 50% had ever tried vaping. So you're more than making up for anyone who quits. There are far more people or students that seem to be willing to try vaping who were not willing to try cigarette smoking. So there's a perception, and there's actually quite a broad literature base So there's a perception, and there's actually quite a broad literature base on this, that vaping is viewed as less harmful or even harmless in comparison to cigarettes. And that has been shown both among youth and adults. That being said, when you do look at the literature, what you'll see very clearly stated is that vape is believed, or vaping in general, is believed to be less harmful than smoking combustible cigarettes. However, there's clearly some harms that can, that come from vaping. And one of the issues is it's a chronic exposure over time. And so we simply haven't had enough time to be able to study the long-term effects of vaping. And it's also quite challenging to study because the ingredients are not regulated, so it's hard to design scientific studies to measure the effects of the ingredients on the lung if we don't, if the ingredients are not standard between different products. So it is challenging to know what the long-term effects are. There are certainly, there's certainly evidence to show that carcinogens are in the air around people who smoke and that what people are breathing in are known carcinogens. So pretty much everyone agrees that you definite, that vaping is definitely far more harmful than not vaping. And there are some data to show that adults who are smoking combustible cigarettes may be somewhat better off vaping instead, but that is far outweighed, I think, by the risk of having youth who are, who are not addicted to nicotine in the first place trying vaping because of the appealing flavors and because of the other appealing issues with vape, and then becoming addicted lifelong to nicotine.
I think the other important thing to note, I just want to add to that, is that the number you cited for the number of deaths in the 40s is that a few important things to know is, one, it's not a reportable, meaning when there are certain deaths that occur in the U.S., they are reportable to the CDC, they're reportable to local health departments. What started happening is that hospitals and physicians started seeing this pattern of all of these people presenting in emergency departments, having respiratory issues, and all of them started saying they were vaping. And when the CDC took note of that, it's just this in the past few months that we've even been looking at the data. So that's not to say since e-cigarettes have been on the market, we have no idea how many deaths they are. We'd have to go back and study every single death certificate to see if there were any histories of vaping, and that's just not something that's ever been looked at on death certificates.
And we are definitely aware of potential cases that are not reported to public health, and there's a lot of evidence to support that if folks are having vaping-related lung injury and are not hospitalized for it, that they're completely going undiagnosed and unreported.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, it just seems to me that, and then you have the vitamin E acetate that was found in all of the samples where the people actually died, right? Is that my understanding? And this is just like an additive that was like a black market type of thing? It's not?
So those are individuals who had diagnosed EVALE according to the CDC case definition. They're not necessarily individuals who were deceased. So it's lung aspirate fluid.
And those were all black market?
So in answer to whether they were all black market, the way that, we don't have perfect information because it's epidemiological information. What we do is from the people that were interviewed, we have to trust what they're saying they were. And based on the particular regulations for THC and marijuana in each state, it's going to vary how much maybe younger individuals or any individuals are going to be willing to admit that they smoked THC. So the general belief is that the vast majority of these individuals did get THC from an informal source rather than through a legal and more, not regulated, but more standardized source.
Okay. It doesn't seem, I mean, when you look at the grand scheme of things, if you look at the causes of preventable deaths, I guess the part that I find a little confusing, you know, when you look at things like tobacco is the number one cause of preventable death, and then like obesity, right, I think is the second cause, something like 300,000 people die every year from obesity. So I guess I struggle with the fact of like, why we're spending time trying to create regulations around something that we don't understand, that only have at most 50 reportable deaths when we, when we, when we know, I mean, we could ban sugary drinks, right, and probably prevent more deaths than preventing vaping, I would assume. I just, I struggle with why we're, why we're spending our time on this versus something that we know kills people.
So absolutely. I think, I think one of, one of the issues is that there's clearly long-term effects that need to be studied. And as with cigarettes, it took 20 years or more to build up enough data to show that the carcinogens that were present in combustible cigarettes actually led to cancer in these individuals. So all we can tell you early on at this phase is that there are known carcinogens in the products, and that there are known carcinogens or cancer-causing agents measured in the air when someone exhales these products. But it's really too early to be able to say definitively that it can lead to cancer. So we can only really base on the science that's out there. Do you want to add to that?
Sure. But like, red meat's a carcinogen, right? Sawdust is a carcinogen.
So, and just to add to that, so the reason we're here today and the reason we're even suggesting this policy update is that there's been concerns from the community that have been expressed directly to us. And the concerns have been about the uptick in youth usage of vaping. It's been about not knowing what people are putting in their vaping devices and what people are being exposed to. It's been about understanding that, that the secondhand exposure is real and that there are carcinogens and metals and different types of chemicals that are in those things. You are right, we don't know the long-term effects. You were right, it's a relatively small number. I mean, any number from a family perspective is too many, but, but from a scientific standpoint, we understand where you're coming from. But one of the reasons that we're bringing this forward and in this way and shape is that is, it's our intention not to impact people's choices. So if there are people out there and vaping has become a credible and a better alternative to smoking for them, they can keep doing that in Mesa. What we are trying to do is just limit the exposure in public spaces for unwelcome secondhand exposure, and especially to our, to our children.
Thanks. Thank you. Other questions, Counsel? All right. Thank you, ladies, very much. We do have a request to speak, Jenny Richardson from our Mesa School Board. We welcome Jenny's attendance at this meeting, particularly providing input on this topic.
You guys are fancier. A lot fancier than the school board meeting. Mayor, Council members and staff, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I am Jenny Richardson. I serve on the Mesa Governing Board. And I just wanted to come and just thank you for your willingness to, to have this conversation and to consider adding a vaping ban to your tobacco in your smoke-free city. Mesa Public Schools Governing Board understands the serious consequences of vaping, and months ago, we updated our policy on tobacco to include vaping, so that it is no, it is not allowed on any of our properties, by students, staff, or visitors on any of our properties during any event, including at buses and bus stops. Vaping among youth, you heard a lot of statistics about it, mine are not nearly so exciting. But according to the National Institute on Drug Abuse, 66% of teens falsely believe that vaporizers only contain flavoring. And in reality, they often contain more nicotine than cigarettes, and 30% of teenagers who start vaping move on to additional cigarettes within six months. As a district, we've seen students as young as elementary school in possession of vaporizers and receiving disciplinary consequences for vaping. We believe consistency will be a key to curbing vaping among youth, and as part of Mesa's community, we support the city's effort to reduce vaping in public areas and support a collaboration between the district and the city to support our children in the long-term dangers of vaping. I just wanted you to have our support and know we appreciate you, and, and as a district, we, we have worked hard to make sure. I think, Councilwoman Whitaker, your questions about vaping, I think, part of my concern as a, as a mom and a board member is the modeling that happens. If, if there's a lot of vaping going on by adults in public places, then our, then our children who maybe don't see and understand what kind of choice that is might think that it's an option for them. And, and so I appreciate the, the efforts of the city to, to consider this move and, and adding vaporizers to their smoke-free policy.
Thank you very much, Jenny. Mr. Lo has a question.
Hey Jenny, when, when you talk to students about vaping, do you talk about the aerosols that they produce and the detrimental effect it could have on them if they're by, if they're a bystander or if they're near somebody that's actually vaping? Do you tell them, talk to them about the dangers associated with that?
I don't know that we necessarily have a curriculum in place to handle, to talk about vaping, other than our healthy lives and healthy choices type curriculums, where they talk to them about it. But certainly it's something that we've looked at adding and, and strengthening in our conversations with them. Right now, currently, if you are caught vaping in Mesa Public Schools, you are subject to a short-term suspension on your first, but usually what it would look like is an in-school suspension, but also some kind of education program that you complete that teaches you about the dangers. It's similar to our tobacco and drug and alcohol. So you would receive education and training about why this is not safe. Our secondary offenses, if you have a further offense, then the consequences rise from there. But mostly with a first-time offense, we're geared toward educating our students about why this is dangerous and why we don't allow them to use it on campus.
Thank you. Yes.
I think one of the biggest things for me, I understand people's rights to use this and if they want to, and I appreciate what you're saying about children, but backing up as far as being an adult. I want to be in an environment in which I choose to, I, secondhand smoke, whether it be a cigarette or vaping, is something I should be able to choose. I can choose not to eat the red meat or the sugary drinks or, you know, whatever it is. But in an environment that allows that, I am putting myself at risk of what I think is a health concern. And I think we have to give the rights to individuals to smoke and for those who choose not to inhale it in a second-degree way, much like cigarette smoking, so we can make our own healthy choices and not be a victim of them.
Thank you. I, I do know that as a district, one of the reasons we first started looking at this was when we had families coming to complain to us at football games. They were sitting outside, they said, hey, we have people vaping all around us, telling us it's not, that it's not, it's not disallowed. It's legal to, for them to do that here. And we, we don't want to come to your football games if this is happening around our families. And so as we looked and investigated them, we said, you're right, we want to update our policy to be sure it is reflective of our tobacco policy because of those reasons that it infringes on the enjoyment and the health and safety of others around them. Thank you.
That's a great point, Jen. Thank you. Other questions for Ms. Richardson? Thank you very much, Jenny.
Thanks.
Okay, so this is off the consent agenda for a discussion upstairs. Also, I should note, 5F needs to come off the consent agenda as well, Kevin. That's, just want to give an opportunity to Kahoots and Ben U to talk about that project.
All right.
All right. Next item on our agenda for this meeting then is Item 2A, that's to hear a presentation on the coordination programs and notices for development within the Phoenix Mesa Gateway Airport, overflight overlay district, and the overflights within the city, including the inner loop district. Welcome.
So the presentation, as you said, is to discuss the city's requirement for the airfield overlay district and our coordination with the Mesa Gateway Airport and all the associated airport. And I have here with me Brian O'Nell from the Mesa Gateway Airport as well to answer any questions that may come up. So the city of Mesa, we did adopt requirements or standards for the airfield overlay in our zoning ordinance back in 2018. And this was a follow-up to the noise control and studies that had been done by the Mesa Gateway Airport a year before. So the main purpose for the airfield overlay in our zoning district or the standards is basically to recognize the effects of the operations of the airport and its impact on surrounding properties, and also to protect continuous use of the airport so that surrounding developments will not become an impediment or basically stop the operation of the airport. And at the end of the day, also ensure that proposed developments are compatible with the airport operations and also protect public health and safety. So right now, in our zoning ordinance or in our requirements, we do have different types of overlay, the airport overlay areas. And the common ones that you hear, or the main ones that we have are three, which is the airport overflight area one, which we commonly call AOA 1, and then we have the AOA 2 and 3. The separation between these, the three categories is based on closeness to the runway and also the noise decibels as well. So the DNL from the definitions in our code is basically your recording of your ambient noise over 24 hours from 10 to 7:00 a.m. That is taken over a period of one year with 10 decibels added to it. And so the closer you are to the runway, the higher you have the decibel. So the AOA 1, which I will show you the maps, are those that are closer to the airport runway. And then the AOA 2 is between 60 to 65 DNL. And then outside the AOA 2, which is your over 65, I mean, your outside 65 DNL. So if you look at, this is a map we have in our code, and I'll show you another map that clearly delineate those areas. We have this map in our zoning code, whenever anybody goes into our zoning code can see the various demarcation of AOA 1, 2, and 3. So this is the map from the airport's land use compactability study that was actually completed in 2017, showing exactly the location of AOA 1, 2, and 3. As you can see, the AOA 3, which commonly we've been talking about for the past months, you can see covers a whole large area within the metro area, basically covers Queen Creek, small part of Pinellas County, and also Gilbert as well. And it's worth noting that the AOA 3, which is the area that actually allows residential, and I'll explain further, all the jurisdictions that are within this area actually do allow residential as well. So Queen Creek and Gilbert also allow residential within the AOA 3. In the city of Mesa, zoning ordinance, we do not allow any residential at all within the AOA 1, which is the 65 DNL. And then in the AOA 2, we do occasionally do allow multifamily in the AOA 2, but subject to a council use permit. So the council use permit has specific criteria. It's not, you have to go through council, meet all the standards established in the AOA 2 for the council use permit. If you may recollect, we had a project that came before you, I think March or April, Gallerie Park, and they were doing certain multifamily in the AOA 2. That's why the council permit, use permit actually came before you. And then in the AOA 3, which allows residential, we do have specific standards or conditions that you have to fulfill or a development has to meet. So the conditions are basically you have to have a navigation easement as part of the approver to relieve, or basically to relieve the city from any liability from the airport noise or any potential impacts that may happen. In addition, there is a requirement that any development within the AOA 3 needs to have notification to inform buyers that you are within AOA 3. And also disclosure on final applies, so all the final applies that are approved, there is a disclosure note which gets recorded that the property is, is in close proximity to the airport. And then also there has to be signage at the leasing offices saying that the property or the development is in close proximity to the airport. And then finally, we do have noise mitigation measures. So whenever they submit the application, there is a requirement that the certified professional, either engineer or an architect or somebody certified, has to certify that a building, you are actually able to have 45 decibels inside a building. So the noise level within the building has to be 45 as well. So that's a basic requirement that whenever you are developing within the AOA 3, you need to sign and show that you are meeting that requirement. And that requirement actually is very similar to most of the jurisdictions, Queen Creek and Gilbert as well, they do have the standard requirements. So what this map actually shows, there's been also discussions about the flight traffic going over the city of Mesa, those also in close proximity to those also in close proximity to the Mesa Gateway Airport. This is actually showing you the flight, departing flies over one month in November. And it also includes all the flight traffic from Falcon Field and the Sky Harbor as well. If you look at this, it shows you that in each day, we have a lot of flights flying over the city as well. This is specific to the Mesa Gateway, showing flies that are actually departing from the airport as well, just specific to Mesa Gateway. And this green highlighted section actually is the Hoss Crossing project that may be coming to you in the coming months as well.
Nana, real quick, the date on your map, it's like a year old. I know there's probably newer maps out there. In fact, I got one from about the same time this year that's a little bit different than what you're showing here. So if you could update that map.
That came from?
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you. Good afternoon. I think on any given day, if you were to pull a flight tracker, any given week, depending on the seasonality, the wind and weather conditions, you would pull a different flight track. Right now, we have our interior runway, 30 left, 12 right, is closed. So you will see a significantly different arrival and departure pattern that exists today than was, that existed a month ago and that will probably exist later this year. So depending on which runway that we use, depending on the wind and weather conditions, whether we're taking off to the north or to the south, you'll see a variety of different patterns that will go in and out of the airport. I do think it's important to point out that we are in the middle of finalizing our airport master plan update. And some of the short-term projects that we have scheduled for the airport, some of the infrastructure projects that we have, is really going to do a lot to enhance the connectivity of all three runways. Traditionally, right now, we're using the inside runway predominantly. Once we have the runway, the taxiway connections, we will be able to use all three runways more efficiently. And then we'll be able to evenly disperse or equitably disperse airport aircraft activity around the region. And then if you look longer term, eventually we will be moving over to the east side with the passenger terminal. And what you'll see is a majority of the commercial passenger traffic going off of the, what is now the outside runway, but soon will be the inside runway. And then all the flight school activity, the traffic and the pattern, will switch over to the other side of the airport and will totally change the traffic pattern that we have existing today.
When we're looking at a map and looking at overflight paths, because that's my biggest concern about the Hoss Crossing, would we not be better off having the most conservative overflight map that's produced by the airport? In other words, should we not look at every month or every week of a year and identify which is the worst-case scenario? So that, because that worst-case scenario is the one that's going to create the most issues, right? That's the one that, and let's say it's during the summer months when your atmospheric conditions aren't really great for aircraft liftoff. And so they're flying a little more power, but they're not climbing out as quickly. And so when you're looking at, for example, an Airbus 300, you know, their safe rate of climb is 3,000 feet or, you know, feet per minute. By the time they roll off of the runway to the time they're over the dairies is less than a minute. So more than likely, they're only 1,000 to 1,500 feet over the earth. So we should be looking at, at that point, where are they at in the map? And what does that look like? Because those are what's going, and I keep telling everybody, get away from the discussion of AOAs. And let's talk, let's have the discussion about what it looks like when somebody's in their backyard and they look up and they see a carrier, whether a commercial or cargo aircraft that's flying 1,000 feet over their house. That's what's going to generate the phone calls to the council. That's what's going to generate the phone calls to you. And that's what's going to impact flight operations at Gateway Airport. That's what I'm trying to get to, is how do I know or what guarantees can be put in place that we're not going to impact the airport? And everybody keeps wanting to talk about AOAs. I don't care about AOAs. The AOAs have nothing to do with it. It's the fact that when you look up and you see an airplane over the top of your house, people are going to complain. It's happening right now in Mr. Brady and my neighborhood because of the work that's being done on the airport. There's aircraft flying right over our house, and there's a lady that's blowing up next door trying to rally the neighbors to complain to the airport about the change in the flight pass to the airport. And so those are the concerns I have. And I, you know, like I met with Mr. Pugh and Ms. Rose a couple of weeks ago, and I told them the same thing. If this were built anywhere else in the city, I wouldn't have an issue. But the fact that you're wanting to build at the, within proximity of the airport like this with the flights that are, the potential for the 2,000 flights that Governor Ducey announced for Sky Bridge of cargo aircraft and the, you know, the 2 million passengers a year that were coming in and out of Gateway Airport, we're going to have issues when we start filling an area in with residential. And that's my concern, and that's been my concern since this thing came up a year and a half, two years ago.
Mayor Giles, Councilmember Thompson, you raise an excellent point about the arrival and departure flight paths that the airport currently experiences and will experience into the future. I do think it's important to point out that the distance between our inside runway and our outside runway is approximately a mile. So depending on which runway we're using, it's going to really determine what the flight path looks like in what areas of, whether it's Queen Creek or Gilbert or the city of Mesa, which area is going to be impacted. One could challenge that 10 years from now, if we outgrow our old commercial passenger terminal on the west side and move to a new facility on the east side, the flight pattern across the entire region is going to change dramatically. And we've always been concerned about residential encroachment. But I think it's really tough to take a look at a snapshot right now and say, "This is what you're going to be experiencing." Because one could also think that the air traffic controllers are directing the pilots to go over where there aren't people living now, and so they're impacting the cows. But if that were a residential development or a mixed-use development, there may be other fly-friendly procedures that the tower would instruct pilots to stay away from that area as well. So there's a lot of unknowns, but I'm right there with you when we talk about residential encroachment and the long-term impact that it could have to the region.
Well, and that goes right back to my point that I'm trying to make, Brian, is the fact that you just said that right now, it's fly-friendly, right? So they're directing the air traffic to fly over areas that aren't populated right now. But when those areas become populated, where are they going to send them? That is where you're going to start impacting the flight operations of Gateway Airport. And whether it's your, whether you're limiting the times of use or whether you're limiting, or you're implementing some type of drastic measures of takeoff like they do at John Wayne Airport, there's going to be an impact to the airport. And at what point in time do we just throw our hands up in the air and we say enough's enough and let's just close the airport? Because it's going to be detrimental. You're never going to get another air carrier like an Allegiant or Southwest or United or anyone else out there if they're faced with these issues of residential encroachment.
Mayor Giles, Councilmember Thompson, quite frankly, we will never throw our hands up and say, "Let's just close the airport." There are impacts to the community and there are impacts to the airport of residential encroachment, but there has never been a commercial airport that has closed because of residential encroachment. I will tell you that there are modifications to flight patterns. There are restrictions that communities have put on airports. But airport, there's not a commercial service airport that's ever closed because of residential encroachment.
Other than El Toro?
El Toro is a perfect example. El Toro was a base conversion that never converted into a commercial service airport because of community concerns. But they never turned into a commercial service airport. They just decided, like other BRAC closures in the country, they decided that they were going to close the facility, not use the established infrastructure for commercial purpose and repurpose that for something else. But El Toro was never a commercial service airport. Thank you.
Speaking of timeliness, and we'll come to Jenny in just a second. Can you go back one slide? Because I was struck by the timeliness. Did you say this is November of this year?
That's correct.
Okay, so this is just a few days old, literally?
That's correct.
Okay.
And my question was related to that. There's blue, which I assume are the flight path. But there's red also, and what's the red?
So the red is arrival, and then the blue is departing flight.
Okay, all right. I missed that. Thank you.
Mayor Giles, members of the council, I think it would be interesting if you had overlaid Chandler into that map as well. The one thing that you don't see is what the elevation of those aircraft are. So they could be, you know, at significant heights. I think it might be a little bit misleading, but if you, the purpose of that is if you threw Chandler in there, it's very difficult because of the 360 days of beautiful flying weather and the topography. It's very, very challenging to find a place in the valley that you're not going to have overflight activity.
And I would assume, Brian, that this is predominantly Sky Harbor traffic. By the way, it's hitting the northwestern and the southwestern portions of Mesa.
A lot of Falcon Field.
I think that you can see, it's tremendous amount of Falcon Field, Gateway Airport. You know, we're getting to 300,000 commercial, I mean, 300,000 total operations a year. So I think it's the combined effect of all of those regional airports in Sky Harbor.
Mayor, Council. So one of the things also that we've been discussing in the past months is the inner loop study and how that relates to the airport noise content to make sure the development in the inner loop is compatible with all the effects or operations of the airport. So if you look at this, this is the 3100 acres in the inner loop. The AOA 1, basically, which is a 65 DNL, is here. And then the 60 DNL, which is the AOA 2, if you look at the inner loop, so there is no residential proposed in the inner loop area for, within the AOA 2 as well. And as I show you the next map, which will be the Hoss Crossing that we've been discussing about, which is 1100 outside, basically, the AOA 2. So if you look at the Hoss Crossing development, it's approximately about half a mile, 2,500 from the AOA 2. And just bear in mind, the inner loop covers the whole area, 3100, with 1100 being the Hoss Crossing as well. So whenever we have a proposed development, as I explained earlier on some of the conditions or standards, we do have standard conditions that are basically imposed or applied to any proposed development. One is the navigation easement. There has to also be the written notice to all future property owners that the property is within the airport proximity. And also there are certain times, based on the height of the development, they need to get what we call 7460 clearance from the Federal Aviation Authority. And then the size of the sign on the property is actually specifically defined. And then the building permit with the requirements that it has to be 45 decibels when you are inside the building. And then on the final subdivision plas, the notice that the property is in close proximity. So these are basic standards that we've worked with the airport to make sure that it actually goes on every project that is within the AOA 1, 2, and 3. Sometimes, based on the projects, we even go further. So if you look at the Hoss Crossing, one of the conditions that we've been working with the applicant actually is to also include wayfinding signage on arterial street corners in addition to the standard conditions, even go beyond that. And also including the ACC and hours, that, you know, the language that the property is within close proximity to the airport as well. So that is going way beyond the standard conditions. So I would say that whenever we have a project, we go through this thoroughly. We also coordinate more with the airport to make sure that all the issues are captured as well. And that concludes my presentation. And I think Brian and I, it was time for more questions.
Thank you. Nana, while you're on this slide, so is this already part of the proposed inner loop zoning case, these additional conditions above and beyond the normal ones?
Number two is, number one is where we, the applicant and us have been discussing and have agreed that it's going to be additional conditioning when it comes before council.
Okay, so that's something that's been added since planning and zoning looked at?
Absolutely, yes.
All right. Thank you. Council, questions for these gentlemen? All right. Thank you very much.
Oh, go ahead.
Oh, thank you. Mayor Giles, members of the council, if I may.
Yeah.
Typically, when we appear before a governing body, it's a lot more clear-cut than the Hoss Crossing project. We typically will appear to oppose a project because they are proposing a portion or the project is a non-compatible land use within the airport, land use compatibility plan that the communities around the airport have adopted. I will tell you that the requirement of the navigation easement and some of the other initiatives, the city of Mesa has one of the most robust programs for trying to achieve continuous disclosure. But the airport feels a responsibility for that as well. And so I just wanted to say that above and beyond the Hoss Crossing, and because we are seeing more residential encroachment and second-home purchases around the airport, there are some initiatives that the airport team has worked on that I'd just like to share with everyone, because I think it's important that the continuous disclosure is a shared responsibility among all parties. And so we do a lot of presentations to HOAs, and we are going to be changing our messaging for the HOAs to talk a little bit more about the importance of letting people who are looking to purchase homes within your community, letting them know the environment that they're moving into. Because what we've found is there's a significant number of people that like living by an airport, and they don't mind aircraft overflight. But it's those that don't like living near an airport that haven't been made aware that they're moving toward, near an airport. Those are the ones that will be the callers to the city or callers to the airport because of the airport noise, aircraft noise created. Second thing, we feel that there's a real responsibility in the real estate industry because we feel that the real estate brokers and the agents that are showing people homes and working with the sellers, we feel they've got a responsibility to also have the disclosure. We don't have flights on Tuesdays at certain times of the year, and you'd be surprised how many real estate agents come out and show airport properties on Tuesdays. And also, I want them to work with the sellers because there is a seller disclosure form that they need to fill out. And I can show you example after example where the question is asked, "Do you live in close proximity to a public airport?" And the answer is no. And I think close proximity or proximity is where it's kind of subjective. But I think if you work with the real estate community and say, "We've got a responsibility to educate people so that homeowners know exactly what they're buying." And if you can do that, then you're going to eliminate a lot of the unhappy, remorseful people that bought a home near an airport because they weren't made aware of that. And then there's also other initiatives that we're doing so that we're going to be able to increase awareness, whether it's signage around the airport or other initiatives, so that when people are looking at homes around the airport, we're going to try and eliminate, greatly reduce, but we'd love to eliminate the, "Geez, I never knew I was buying a home near an airport." And we feel a responsibility to do that. So we've, we're implementing or we've put a little more teeth behind some of the activities that we already do to fulfill that responsibility as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. The next agenda item is related. It is to hear a presentation and discuss proposed annexations within the inner loop district.
Mayor, Council, also, there's been discussion as to what are the total acreages for the Hoss Crossing and which areas are in the county, which areas are in the city. So this presentation, just to give you an overview. Right now, the inner loop area, which is 3100, the Hoss Crossing project, it's only 1100, covers 1100 of the inner loop area. And out of the 1100, only 161 is currently in the city. The remainder is actually in the county. So 969 acres is currently in the county that the city do not have jurisdictional control as to what happens in the area. And this is the map showing the whole Hoss Crossing. So this area shaded in white is the area in the city. And then to the southern part of Warner is in the city. The remainder here in blue is actually state land. And then the kind of pink- And then the kind of pink or this color is the area basically owned by six property owners. What makes Halls Crossing really unique is, right now, the county zoning designation is actually RU 43, which is one acre per unit. Or you can devolve one single family home on one acre. And then to the western part, actually, it's industrial 1 and 2, which allows industrial uses. What we believe that has made this unique is being able to get multiple property owners to actually come together and devolve under unified development theme that even, let's say, even if all the properties are even annexed separately into the city, you're still not going to be able to have the kind of unified development that is being proposed because you have one property owner coming in to propose to annex his or her property, develop it in a certain way, and then another one coming. But now you have 1100 of a very well-planned development that is being proposed. So this also shows, right now, the surrounding zoning designation in the city where we have limited industrial and then the zoning designation on the portions of the area in the city's light industrial, ag, and then ag here. So overall, this is kind of the planned annexation. As you know, you've already, there was, the notice to release, the petition was before council a couple of months ago, and then that is moving forward. So we're just going to wait for whenever this project is ready to come, and then it will come or it will be accompanied with a request to annex a property as well.
So there'll be a pre-annexation agreement?
Correct.
Is that right? So a pre-annexation agreement will be tied to the zoning? Or is that my, oh, the development agreement? How does that work? Because I think the point we're trying to make is that the condition of them coming into the city will also be tied to the zoning or the development agreement. How does that work, Jim?
Yeah, Mayor and Council, the intent, I think, right now is both if it comes forward and when it comes forward, it'll be all on one agenda, it'll be in an annexation, it'll be comparable rezoning and a development agreement, and it'll all be back-to-back-to-back sort of on the agenda.
Now, also explain the issue with the state trust link, because it can't be included with the, is it have to be done separately? Because the council may see that as two different actions, is that correct?
Mayor Council, so there are two, the six private property owners have one development agreement, and that will be a separate case. And then we have the state land, which is a separate case as well. So they all each have each in development agreement, but overall, it's a unified development with the state land and the private individual owners as well.
Just want to make it clear, because we see it on the agenda, you'll have two different ones.
Okay. That was. Thank you. Questions on this agenda item? All right.
So just to make sure that I understand correctly, so the annexation will not incur unless the Halls Crossing is approved or?
They'll be tied together, yes. We'll sit, we'll be on the same agenda, and I think we, yeah, they'll be on the same agenda. So there'll be a package.
Okay, so if Halls Crossing is not approved, then the annexation would drop?
Mayor and Council, how we normally have done this is it's, we'll usually have it all on one vote, and so it's not usually on the consent vote, but because the developers will want it on one vote so that you're not annexing in property, and then you don't, then you don't give them the zoning or you don't give them the development agreement, they, you know, they want it all approved or not approved. And so it'll all be, it'll all be one vote.
One agenda item.
Right. But, you know, council members can still vote up or down on that one vote, but it'll be one vote for the package.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Other questions? All right, Nana, thank you very much.
So Mayor, just quickly, we will bring to the council the first part of the year. We mentioned there were three items that we've been working on with the development. And so we have discussions that get resolved between, on the legal documents, related to providing for the utility corridor, addressing residential development on Elliott and not allowing it on the ground floor.
That's correct.
So it has to be included as part of a mixed-use development.
That's correct.
And then these items here, this disclosure, ongoing disclosure, making sure those are added in the conditions. So when we have those done, then we'll bring that back to council for further discussion.
So it's good to see that we're taking care of everything except my concerns. So thank you.
Okay. Other questions for Nana or Mr. Brady? All right, thank you very much. The next item on our agenda for this meeting is item three, that's to hear reports on meetings and conferences attended. Council, I know we've had a busy few days, all the events being crammed in before the year is over. Who would like to start?
I'll start.
Mr. Luna.
Thank you, Mayor. Friday, we had East Valley Regional Firefighter graduation. We had 16 graduations, I mean, sorry, 26 fire graduates. And so we want to wish them well as firefighters and paramedics, so that was great. It was done at Central Christian Church. Also, I want to thank Jake West, Jake here? Jake West, thank you for giving us a tour of smart meters and what that's going to look like and what they're doing now. So I appreciate his staff taking time to show me how that's going to be implemented and where we are in the future. So thank you very much.
Jen.
I'll sort of dumb this. Last week, I went to the ASU Decision Center and looked at data sets on education. They also have, it's like a surround sound with all these different data sets according to, and you can manipulate them and put what information you want, and it changes all the other ones. Or you can see what other cities are doing. Phenomenal for what we're trying to do with our Higher Education Task Force. They also have data sets on crime and water and the census, and so that'll be a valuable resource for not only our city but other cities in the Phoenix area. In addition to going to their Decision Center, I went to the Polytech ASU Innovation Showcase on Friday, in which engineering students presented their projects, and they have some really creative ideas. I went last year, always impressed by the work that they do at Polytech with their students. On Saturday morning, we had the Eagles Community Park ribbon cutting. The park is finally done with the Ninja course and all kinds of other entities, as well as the community space there. And so it is an exciting time to see that done, and we cut the ribbon on that. The mayor was there, and I think that was as far as from council and a lot of the city staff, so thank you. And we also did the Positacristo ribbon cutting on their renovated area. They do tremendous work and love to see that they're being able to accommodate the users much more efficiently. And yesterday, I went on a rail Asian business walk. We went along the new Asian corridor. Well, not the, it's not new, but we're, since we're working on it as a city with the Asian corridor and branding it and looking at that, we walked all through the areas and all the businesses and what's going to be and what are thoughts and ideas. Very exciting, there's more restaurants there that I added to my list. And we'll be seeing and hearing more about the Asian Business District and Councilmember Heredia's district, but we did a community walk. That's about it. Other than, I will say that excited for our announcement of Kahoots joining Benedictine tonight after our council meeting, which I trust it will be approved. Thank you.
Thank you. Who's next? I appreciate some of the things, the Eagles Park, I just want to double down on Jen's comment. The community's been very patient. As you know, there's been some construction delays. But I just want, for the folks that have driven by that project for many months, I want you to stop and go in and take a look at it. It really turned out very, very nice. And it's been, it's been fun to drive by Horn and Broadway the last, you know, couple of weeks and seeing that place just lit up with people and activity. So the wait was worth it. And thank you to Mesa Public Schools for partnering with us on that. And there's, much like Riverview and Pioneer, there's some really fun, interesting features built into that park. This Ninja course that Jen was describing is really fun. There's also a early education, kind of pre-K walk built in. If you've got a young, a preschooler, there's a real education opportunity that's built into the infrastructure of the park. So I hope, I know people have already discovered it because every time I drive by, it's crowded. But I was really proud at the dedication of that park. It was really done well. The other things, maybe some of that hasn't been mentioned yet, we, some of us made it out to the Salt River Project, and CAP had an event this morning. The Salt River siphon is shut down, and so we had the great opportunity to crawl into the bottom of a really big canal. And, but just to be reminded of the millions of gallons of water that come into our system through the Central Arizona Project this morning was a great reminder of the partnership we have with CAP in addition to SRP. So it's fun to see the amazing water infrastructure that we had this morning. Anything else we'd like to highlight from our calendars? If not, Mr. Brady, what does the future calendar look like?
No meetings for the rest of the year. That's your future.
And Jill, our first study session back in January is?
Is January 9th. That's when we'll see you next.
Okay, great. Is there a motion to adjourn this meeting? Thank you. All in favor, please say aye. Aye, we are adjourned.